Good evening, everybody. Tonight is Wednesday, July 28, 2021, and I would like to call this meeting of the Macomb Township Board of Trustees to order. Time is 6:30 PM. We will now say the pledge.
Mr. Chairman, I suggest someone get the flag from the hallway.
Oh, yeah, we need our flag. Hold on one second, and we will have a flag retrieval.
I'm looking around for the flag. I know it's here.
I forgot it was outside.
We brought the flag out earlier to take a few pictures, and somebody carelessly left it out there, and his name shall remain unspoken.
None of the elected officials.
No, of course not.
Not our fault.
He looks like a hero.
Roger, you're storming the beach. He just needs a little fife and a hat.
Roger, we need a drum roll or something.
Can you walk around with it while we say the pledge? Wave it. All right. Thank you, Roger. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Whoever carried it outside should be fired. Be called. All right. Clerk Posey, will you call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Trustee Cusmano?
Here.
Trustee Lucido?
Here.
Trustee Oliver?
Here.
Trustee Nevers?
Present.
Treasurer Gillette?
Here.
Clerk Posey, here. Supervisor Viviano?
Here.
All members are present.
Moving on to approval of the agenda. Clerk Posey, are there any additions, deletions, or corrections?
Mr. Chairman, there's been one suggestion to postpone item number 12 for further review. Other than that, I have nothing.
Is there any discussion?
I move to approve the agenda as amended.
All right. Now, is there any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I ask that the reason that the item is being removed be discussed.
The...
And I...
It came in over... The county's estimates came in over the initial projections, and we want to look into the reasons why.
Okay. That's satisfactory.
Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. There is a motion to approve the agenda as corrected. Members, please vote.
Mine didn't come up. Oh, there it is.
I forgot to mention who made the motion and seconded it. Anybody second it?
Leon did.
Christie did.
I motioned Leon's.
You motioned. Oh, okay, I seconded it. I'm sure Roger will get it right. That motion passed unanimously. All right, moving on to approval of the bills. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Support. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question regarding an item on page 14, to Michigan Elite Volleyball Academy for $2,400. I'd like an explanation for what that was in payment for.
Mr. DeCaro, since you're here. You gonna just jump up to the podium?
Good evening. Yeah, that's just a volleyball camp that we have. That would be the contractor. We have a 60-40 split with the contractor, so that would be their portion of what we took in.
Do we recoup those months' money and fees to the participants?
We get 40%.
Oh.
Whatever they pay, the contractor gets 60%, we get 40%.
I understand. Thank you, Mr. DeCaro. That's all I have.
Any more discussion on the bill run? Okay, hearing none. We have a motion by Clerk Posey, supported by Treasurer Gillette, to approve the bill run. Members, please vote. Moving on to item four, approval of the previous meeting minutes from July 14, 2021. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. We have a motion from Trustee Nevers, supported by Clerk Posey, to approve the previous meeting's minutes. Members, please vote. That motion passes unanimously. Moving on to public comment. This is for agenda items only. If anyone wishing to make public comment that is present, please make your way to the podium. Anyone who is participating digitally, please raise your hand on the Zoom app, and you will be called on. Seeing no one present, Mr. Ivanowski, is there anybody?
No, sir, not at the moment.
Okay, no comment. We will close public comment. Move on to the consent agenda. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chair, move the consent agenda in its entirety?
Support.
Is there any discussion on the consent items? Hearing none. We have a motion by Treasurer Gillette, supported by Clerk Posey. Members, please vote. All right, we will now open a public hearing. We have a resolution for the adoption of a street lighting special assessment district for Wellington Estates condominiums, phase one. We will open the public hearing. The time is 6:36. Is there anyone who wishes to speak on the proposed SAD for Wellington Estates condos? Mr. Ivanowski, is there anybody who digitally wishes to participate?
No, sir, not at the time.
Okay, seeing that there's no one who wishes to comment, I will close the public hearing. The time is 6:36. So we will now have... Do we have a motion on the resolution?
Motion to adopt the resolution is presented.
Support.
Mr. Van Tiflin, can you give us some background?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, board members. This is a typical requirement for a new development. All new site condominiums and subdivisions are required to have street lighting. This is the SAD that would allow DTE to charge the township and for the township to be reimbursed by their residents in the subdivision in the future. We've gotten our estimates. They're included in the resolution. We are recommending approval.
Thank you, Mr. Van Tiflin. Any discussion or questions from the board? Okay, hearing none. We have a motion by Clerk Posey, supported by Trustee Nevers, to adopt the resolution to approve the resolution to adopt the street lighting special assessment district for Wellington Estates condominiums, phase one. Clerk Posey, will you call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Clerk Posey, yes. Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Trustee Cusmano?
Yes.
Trustee Lucido?
Yes.
Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Treasurer Gillette?
Yes.
Supervisor Viviano?
Yes. Motion passes, or the resolution is adopted. Item 10, we're gonna open a second public hearing. And again, if you wish to participate digitally, please raise your hand. You will be called on. At this time, I am opening the public hearing to discuss the resolution for the adoption of the SAD for Char Estates Site Condominiums. The time is 6:38. Is there anyone who wishes to speak? Nobody present? Mr. Ivanowski?
No, sir, not at this time.
Okay, at this time, then I will close the special... The public hearing. The time is, again, 6:38.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to adopt the resolution as presented.
Support.
Mr. Van Tiflin?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, board members. This is the exact same thing as we went through with the last item. It's actually the subdivision right next door along 24 Mile Road. We have everything that we need from DTE. The resolution reflects those costs, and we're recommending approval.
Thank you, Mr. Van Tiflin. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, it's my understa... This is a question to Mr. Van Tiflin. It's my understanding that usually during the normal course of business, the developer owns the majority of the units and then petitions the township for the special assessment district and works in concert with DTE Energy and the township to bring this forward, to bring street lighting. Is that correct?
That is correct. They own all the lots in the development. They're responsible for all of the construction costs for the installation of the lights. So we've received those funds. We can now proceed with the... Adopting the resolution that would actually put the SAD in place. But no township funds would be spent. It's all developer funds.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Cusmano. Anything else? Okay, hearing none. We have a motion to adopt the resolution for the SAD for Char Estates Site Condominiums. Clerk Posey, will you call the roll?
State the motion. Motion by Posey.
Oh, I'm sorry. Motion by Clerk Posey, supported by Treasurer Gillette.
Clerk Posey, yes. Treasurer Gillette?
Yes.
Trustee Cusmano?
Yes.
Trustee Lucido?
Yes.
Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
And Supervisor Viviano?
Yes. Resolution is adopted. All right, moving on to item 11. We have a request to approve membership and daily admission fee increase at the Rec Center. The motion.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. DeCaro?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening again, board. The Parks and Recreation Department is requesting permission to increase our membership and daily fees at the Rec Center. Our current fees have remained the same for the past 17 years. They have not changed since the day we opened in 2004. Since that time, we've endured seven increases in minimum wage, which directly impacts our wage scale. That, along with the rising costs of consensual services, supplies, equipment, and utilities, we believe this increase is something that needs to be done. I've included the current fees as well as the proposed fees. I'm here to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. DeCaro. Any questions from the board?
Mr. Chairman, I have a few questions. I texted them over both to some members of the board and also to Mr. DeCaro. The questions were, what is the expected revenue increase if the increases are approved annually? You know, I mean...
You want me to take them one at a time like that?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, so currently, we have 3,734 members. So we have 3,413 resident members. So with the $5 increase for that, we would take in $17,065 per month and $204,780 per year. We have 321 non-residents. That's a $10 increase. So we'd be taking in 32... I'm sorry, $3,210 per month and $38,520 per year. So the membership increase would bring in a total of $243,300. On the daily side, a little harder to do because really, 2020 was an anomaly for us to look at anything. So if you go back to the 2019 resident dailies, we had 34,830 people came through our door. So we are asking to increase by $3. That would be $104,490 per year. And for non-residents, we had 25,777 visits. That will be increased by $6, which comes out to $154,662, for a total of $259,152. So if you put those two numbers together, we hope to bring in $502,452 more.
Mr. DeCaro, does that account for the incentive that is on...
It doesn't... That does count for the incentive.
That accounts for the incentive, okay.
Mr. Chairman, for the residents, what is the incentive?
Incentive that they have as part of this fee adoption that increases their one instituted program there. If you move to an annual membership, or if you already have one, if you pay your annual membership upfront, you get an additional month for free.
So you get 13 for the price of 12.
And was the proposed increase included in the budget that was passed in June? If not, why?
It was not. Why was it not?
Yes.
We were just in preliminary talks before the budget was due. We were in preliminary talks about it. The budget was due before we made the decision to move forward.
All right. And how much of costs increases compared to revenues? And I know that the COVID year is an outlier, but have your costs increased $502,000?
It did not. In the COVID year, we lost $955,000.
But that was covered by federal grant money, right?
Well, I hope so, yes, but we haven't seen that yet.
Okay, and what was the final question? Other than raising fees, are there alternatives such as increasing use volume? And if so, how much of an increase would be needed to fill the revenue gap?
Well, to answer the first part of the question, we feel we've done everything so far that... We try stuff all the time. So over the years, you'll see that our membership and our dailies are pretty steady. So I don't know that we would increase too much. Hopefully, this... With the annual, that will help. But I don't really look at it as trying to... There's not really a gap for us to try to make up. I think it's just the cost of everything has gone up. We actually paid $26,000 this month for DTE, for electrical fees. So everything has gone up. Our building's 17 years old. I think we're just trying to be proactive as to some of the things. If you remember, a couple of years ago, we replaced a PDU in the pool that was about $785,000. So we're getting to the point... The first five to eight years, we had very little repairs and costs that we had to worry about. We have to start thinking about the future. And at 17 years, I think the building is in great shape, and we want to keep it that way.
Well, if I can add to that, one thing that we know for sure is that the building is near the end of its life... Or the building, I'm sorry. The roof is near the end of life on...
That's correct.
It was a 20-year roof when it was installed, and we're expecting to have to replace that. Hopefully not.
So the expenses we have coming our way are gonna be a lot bigger than we've had in the last 10 years. We also still are paying on the bond, you know, for three more years.
Is it three years or two years?
I believe it's three. Thought it was two. Stacy's here. Do you remember how many years are left on that bond?
There's ones do... Coming off end of this year, one's coming off the end of next year, and then one's coming off in '26. So there's three bonds left.
Okay. Thank you. And the numbers you gave assumes that there won't be any decrease, and you don't anticipate any decrease associated with the increase in the fees, right?
That's correct. That's what the current numbers.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Cusmano. Anybody else have any questions? Any discussion?
Madam Chair... Excuse me. Mr. Supervisor, I think it's quite laudable that all of this time, you haven't had to raise any of the fees, and the building has been beautifully kept up. Membership keeps increasing. I think it's a pat on the back for our recreation.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I just... How will you notify all the current members that the rate is going up?
We have an E-blast that we would send to them. This wouldn't go into effect until September 1st, so if this is approved sometime next week, we'll send something out.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Anything else? Okay. Hearing no more discussion. We have a motion by Treasurer...
Gillette.
Treasurer Gillette, supported by...
Nevers.
Trustee Nevers, to approve the membership and daily admission fee increase at the Rec Center. Members, please vote.
Thank you, board.
All right. Next item is tabled. Moving on to item 13. We have a request to approve the pathway abeyance for 56508 Omo Road, parcel number 08-01-226-019. Is there a motion?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Mr. Van Tiflin?
Mr. Chairman, board members. The owner of this particular parcel is planning on building a house that would normally require the sidewalk be installed along with the house across the entire public road frontage. In this case, it's an Omo Road. There are no sidewalks in this area, so the property owner is requesting that they be given an abeyance so that this sidewalk isn't installed with the house. It'll be installed at some point in the future when the township requests it. We've reviewed the request, think it's reasonable, and are recommending approval.
Thank you, Mr. Van Tiflin. Are there any questions or discussion? Okay, hearing none. There's a motion by Trustee Oliver, supported by Clerk Posey, to approve the pathway abeyance for 56508 Omo Road. Members, please vote. Item 14 is a request to award Geotech Engineering and Material Testing Services for the 2021 Pathway Gap Closure Program in the amount of $8,348. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Support.
Mr. Van Tiflin?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, board members. At the last meeting, the Township Board approved the change order that allowed us to start the construction of the 2021 Pathway Gap Closure Program. We're now at a point where we need to hire a materials testing firm to make sure that all the materials that show up on the site in our place meet all the township requirements. We went out to... Out for proposal to some engineering firms. We received two proposals. After reviewing those proposals, we are recommending that Intertech PSI be awarded this work in the amount of $8,348. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions or discussion? Okay, hearing none. We have a motion by Clerk Posey, supported by Trustee Oliver, to award the Geotech Engineering Material Testing Services for the 2021 Pathway Gap Closure Program. That motion passes unanimously. Moving on to item 15. We have a request to reclassify employee number 1338. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. DeBaca?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Supervisor and board members. I'm here to request that employee number 1338 be reclassified from an appraiser to a property appraiser. This employee is obtained as Level III MAAO certification, which is a requirement for this position. The employee supervisor feels that this employee's been performing these responsibilities and duties of a property appraiser for quite some time, that the department has been down one property appraiser for many years due to another employee's resignation. Thank you for your consideration of this matter. If approved, this would go into effect ASAP. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. DeBaca. Any questions or discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
Does it include an increase in pay scale for this employee?
Yes, that would be $1.38 more an hour, and that would be $28.70 more a year.
Is that amount within the approved budget for this department?
No, it was not.
So this was not anticipated when the budget was passed?
No, it was not done at that time, no.
Okay. Is it gonna make us over-budget on this particular budget line item?
That I don't know.
There was a little cushion in there, so it kind of depends, I guess, if there's any other changes and how the collective party agreement will end up this year, so that's a good question mark.
Mr. Chairman, I'm not trying to diminish the value of this employee, but this is the second time that there was a matter coming before this board that was reasonably knowable and not included in the budget process. I don't... I want to just urge my fellow board members that we have a responsibility to the residents when we approve the budget, and I made mention of this, that I asked this question, was it within the approved budget as a matter of course? I have no further questions.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Sure.
We met with every department head going into the budget process, going over their proposed budgets very carefully, and I do concur with Trustee Cusmano that this can... Something like this should have been reasonably interpreted. It is a relatively small amount of money, $2,300, so it's not gonna break the budget, especially compared to some of the road projects we're facing. So I would just encourage, as we go through the budget process, maybe we have to be more... A little bit more strongly requesting department heads anticipate something that they reasonably feel is gonna be coming up with regard to pay increases or reclassifications. Just comment, not a question.
Okay.
And, Mr. Chairman, as I understand it from Stacy and Finance, this is within a cushion or a pad that's put in the budget, the $2,000. Thank you. I have no more for questions, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Trustee Cusmano. Is there any more discussion? All right, hearing none. There is a motion by Trustee Oliver, supported by Clerk Posey, to approve the reclassification of employee number 1338. Members, please vote. Item 16, we have a request to authorize the supervisor to execute the SMART Municipal Credit and Community Credit Contract for fiscal year 2022. Supervisor, so move.
Second.
Thank you. So we have our partners here to give us a presentation?
Yes. Hopefully, to answer any questions you have, I'm not sure if I have so much of a presentation.
Okay.
For those of you that I've not met before, and there's a number of new faces since two years ago when I was here last on your board, my name is Jeff White. I don't work for SMART. I work for Richmond and Lennox Township. My direct bosses are Mr. Reader in Lennox Township and Mr. DeVos in Richmond Township. So we are your township neighbors, not a local entity, private firm, that work with SMART to provide the community partnership service, which is the small buses that serve Macomb Township. I'd like to start, if I may, by just thanking both Supervisor Viviano and Treasurer Gillette for taking actually a long time on two different days to meet with us. They were great meetings and longer than meetings we had had with previous boards with regards to this. And so it was wonderful to have just the opportunity to explain the service, to answer questions that they had, and in fact, you know, try to brainstorm, I would call them meetings, some ideas for how we might make further improvements to the service provided to your residents. I think probably what came out of that, not wanting to put words into anyone's mouth, but I'll use my words, that I think what I identified is that there are a number of people in the township that I think would benefit further from our service that are simply still unaware of it. And I think there's an importance in us doing some further marketing and informational campaigning work here, if you will, to make certain that all your residents, and especially your seniors and the disabled, are aware of this community service. Everybody in Macomb County pays a mill for this service, you know, at this point in time. That's what the current SMART millage is, and we just want to make sure they're all getting some sort of bang for their buck, if you will. I hate to think taxpayers pay for something and they feel they get nothing for it. In Macomb Township, prior to COVID, we were providing about 4,500 rides per year on the small buses. During the COVID... The height of the COVID period, we were down to about 2,400 total rides. We had the same number of buses operating in your community. We were just operating them far less full, and we were focusing a little bit more on what we called essential services. People needed to get to dialysis and oncology and other doctor's appointments. The grocery, grocery is essential, you know, if you will, in, I think, everybody's world. And so we were still doing those kind of trips, but we weren't doing as many of the hair salons and other things that we might normally have, you know, taken some of our, like I say, especially our seniors and disabled, too. So we did change a little bit during COVID. I will tell you that service levels have come roaring back, and probably the last three weeks, we are... Three to four weeks, we are approaching pre-pandemic levels of service. We've reopened our airport service, which we had shut down during the height of the pandemic, if you will. We had stopped taking people out of the airport. One, there wasn't too many people going, and two, we just didn't feel that was essential as some of the other services at that point in time. But we've reopened that for all of your residents. I know that is booked many... I think every day of the week, there are people booked to go to Detroit Metropolitan Airport for various trips, both business and pleasure. During the pandemic, we did order a new, larger vehicle, and we're really pleased that that will be on the way here. We think we'll have that in October or November. Usually they come a little faster than that, but as, as with all manufacturing, things are a little bit slowed right now. But once we have that, that is going to be available to our partner communities, especially for recreational kind of trips. We found that some of our recreation programs in our communities want, would ask us to use buses to, to do recreational kind of trips, and what we found is we'd have to send two or three small shuttle buses, you know, to, to accommodate those kind of trips. And with this vehicle, we should be able to send one, or maybe one in an overflow vehicle to, to accommodate your communities in that regard. You know, two things that, that, that I'm, I'm, I'm really proud of, that we do, and that we've done a little differently. One is, we do something that, that I like to call, at our operation, door-through-door service, so I, we don't do door-to-door service. And some of this came out of where we began. So we began this service in, in our own communities in Richmond and Lennox Township. And even still here in parts of Macomb, people live a hundred and eighty feet off the road, generally, in the countryside or further. To tell seniors and disabled people we're going to pull up at the ditch line and have them come out to our vehicle with, with a walker or wheelchair was, was simply unsafe. My background is as a paramedic. I, I also operate the EMS for Richmond and Lennox Township. So my background is keeping people safe, and that just didn't feel safe to us. It's also not uncomfortable for us because of our EMS background, kind of in philosophy, to go into people's homes. And so, we, we're able to go into people's homes, help them out in their wheelchairs, help them out in their walkers, help them onto the bus, help them get inside, and that's something a lot of local transportation just does not do, either, either out of liability reasons or, or other concerns, they just stay away from that. For us, we have a lot bigger liability issues in emergency services than we do in operating your small buses. So, in fact, that doesn't worry us a bit, and we just feel like it's the right thing to do to keep our residents safe. So we don't care if you live in a local condominium, you know, kind of thing, where we're pulling right up to the door, or whether we are getting to a home that is a little more rural, we are, we go inside your home, even during COVID, we bring you out, we get you on the vehicle safely, and get you to and from your destination. So, so I'm always really, really proud of our, our staff for how they handle those situations. The other thing that, that occurred during COVID, and, you know, I, I think everybody would appreciate, that, that we had some drivers that we didn't want to have to lay off. Nobody wanted to lay anybody off during COVID. And so we had the opportunity to work with the folks at SMART Bus, we had the opportunity to work within our own organization, the EMS, and, and pull together a program that allowed us to administer sixteen thousand vaccines from our building on Thirty-two Mile Road where the buses are kept. We did it in a drive-through fashion, so we had some of our bus drivers actually helping direct traffic, so we didn't have to lay them off. We had other bus drivers actually going out into the community and picking people up and bringing them in by bus, so that they could get vaccinated, especially those that were seniors and disabled. And we worked with our partners at SMART Bus, the, I call it SMART Bus Corporate, in fact, to handle the call center, because they had dispatchers available to, to be able to schedule these people for vaccines. So, you know, th- those are things I don't think local transportation really thought was, was part of their job during COVID, and, and I kind of thought it was part of everybody's job. So we, we took that on and, and worked with the Health Department and, and SMART to, to make that happen here, especially for residents of Macomb Township and northern Macomb County. Lastly, as we look, as we look forward, one of the things that I have talked with the supervisor about, and supervisors of your neighbor and communities, is right now, to get a ride on our buses, you need to make the appointments about forty-eight to seventy-two hours in advance. That's just because the buses fill up in that amount of time. The, but, but we still have this need for really essential same-day service. Some people call and they need a doctor's appointment that day. And so we are exploring and, and beginning to talk to SMART about a vehicle and, and using funding in order to provide some same-day service options, and, and have a vehicle that would be almost Uber-like, if you will, for people to be able to call upon, you know, and, and get that same-day appointment that they, that they might need. We're still working out the final details on that, but we hope that'll further increase ridership in your community, as well as communities that are around you. With that, I know I talked a bit, but, but it's something I'm pretty passionate about, and, and I, and I want you to all understand it, because, you know, you guys provide us a considerable amount of money in, in these SMART and municipal, SMART Municipal and Community Credits. And, and I, and I want you to understand what your money's being spent on, and I want your residents to understand, you know, what, what their money's being spent on. So, so I, I appreciate you giving me the time to speak with you tonight, and certainly I would try to be brief in answering any questions to keep your meeting moving along.
Thank you for not having a presentation, that was quite a presentation. Fred, did you want to add anything?
I promised to be briefer than Jeff, but, but thank you for asking. I just wanted to share with you that, as, as you guys had recommended about helping communicate about the services that are being provided by Richmond Lennox EMS. I had a preliminary meeting on Monday with SMART's marketing company. We have a local advertising firm that we contract with, and they're hoping to have some ad copy ready within about thirty days to share with the board, and the, the dollars that you're setting aside for that will not, will not be used for that. We're, we're handling all those costs, so the dollars that you set aside will be strictly used to pay for the actual advertising, whether it's in CNG or an electronic medium or, or so forth. So we're covering that cost, but we'll share with you the ad copy, and, along with Jeff, and, and if you guys have any concerns about, you know, how it's developed, we'll, you know, make edits as, as need be, so, short and sweet.
Thank you. So just for some added information, we, the funds that are, we're talking about allocating to Richmond Lennox through the SMART program are part of the SMART millage. This is the portion that's allocated to Macomb Township that SMART holds for us and spends on our behalf. Correct me if I'm getting any of this wrong. We, for this next fiscal year, are projected to get about $212,000. As in past years, a small portion of that, $15,000, is allocated towards programs that'll be used at the senior program, shuttle services effectively, to events that take place off-site. We did ask, after speaking with these two gentlemen and learning more about the programs, we did come to the understanding that our residents don't use the program as much as they possibly could, and it's available to them. So we did ask them to set some, set aside some funds, which come to about five percent of the total, ten thousand dollars, to put towards marketing, and they're going to do so in the CNG and in direct digital ads. They're developing all the copy, we, they have copies of our logo, and they're going to send them to us for approval.
Correct.
So, we think with a little bit more of an outreach on behalf on our, you know, that they will do on our behalf, that our residents will learn that there is a service available to them to help them, get them from, you know, different locations, even rides to the airport.
And, and we can share that ad copy with Sal. I'm sure he's got a recreation newsletter, and he mentioned eBlast earlier. We can certainly share that with, with Sal, so we can help get it out that way as well.
Great, thank you. So with that said, is there any questions or discussion from the board?
I just have one, just a clarification.
Yes, sir.
Did you say you're going to one-day pickup, or you?
We're, yeah, we will, what, what I'm going to provide you an assurance of is, when I tell you I'm about to do something, it means I'm about to do it, and, and so, and we've done that with every part of our program thus far, for those of us, for those of you that have been around some years. And, and so we're just, we have to get through the process, we need, we need a vehicle to do it with. We need to set the parameters of, of, you know, the hours and the rides and what have you. So we're still, we're working out those details, but I would say, you know, between even getting the vehicle, I would say we'll have it up and running probably within six months or shorter.
Good, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Trustee Oliver.
Mr. Chairman, just so I'm clear on the process, is this a form contract, or is this a contract that terms and conditions were negotiated by, as I understand it, yourself, your office, and Treasurer Droulet with the provider?
This is basically a form contract.
Okay.
The same contract we've entered into for how long now?
Nineteen ninety-seven, I believe, was the, the initial one. And, yeah, so it's, it's a form, obviously there are a couple exhibits in terms of describing the service and so forth, so there's some, some opportunities to, to move things around a little bit, but the form, the contract itself is basically a form, and then we edited the exhibits in a way that allows us to, to move, move some of the dollars into the advertising portion.
Okay. Is, and, it's, it's a millage that's on everyone's tax bill, so what would be any reason why a municipality would vote no on this? Is there any municipality that's ever voted no and rejected the service?
Not in Macomb County, not in Macomb County.
Can I, can I try to pitch in on that? So, we of course, as a community, have the option of spending that money directly. We just don't have a mechanism to do it. We don't have any bus services or anything else. Some of the other communities that are around us do. We use the Richmond Lennox service as our, effectively our supplier for that service.
Okay.
Yeah, there, there's several examples of that, and, for example, Utica transfers the funds to Shelby, and Shelby's senior program operates the service there. Up in Romeo, there's Romeo, Washington, Bruce, they transfer all their dollars to an organization called Star Transportation, which is senior transportation through advanced reservations. So there, it's part of their Parks and Rec Department, they actually operate the service. So, in terms of rejecting the dollars, technically you're not taking them, you know, to be operated by the township, but you're contracting with, with the subcontractor to provide the service. So you're not really rejecting them.
To summarize, we're in a cooperative agreement with Richmond Lennox that avoids us having to create the infrastructure to distribute these services.
Correct. And, and these services, and these funds can only be spent on these type of services. It's not that we can use them anywhere else, and they're already being collected.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, that's all I have.
Okay.
I have one, a couple of questions. The hundred eighty-six thousand portion, the subcontract, is that devised like on a average-per-ride basis or average usage-of-service basis, or is that just a flat fee, or how does that work?
Yeah, you know, so it's, for, for our operation, frankly, it's more of a flat kind of fee at this point in time. You know, the service, when you start to advertise the service, it needs to be available whether we do two riders in a day or whether we get twenty calls from your community. We'd like to see more, we'd like to see the twenty come in, but, you know, we're not, you know, well, we're more than that, but, but we'd like to see, you know, more and more riders use, utilize the service. But right now, it is more of a flat fee, we don't devise that out by the number of...
And then if, if we fall short in our revenue, are we responsible out of our general fund to cover any of that?
Absolutely not. We, we, this service, we operate this, like I say, Richmond and Lennox Township own the ambulance authority that operates this service. But we also provide the service in Chesterfield, New Baltimore, even up in Little Memphis, Michigan, so, so it's, it's a cooperative, when, I, I believe the trustee indicated, you know, it's, it's a cooperative between Macomb Township and really most of the Macomb County communities in north, central and northeast Macomb County are part of this cooperative.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Supervisor, I would just like to ask a, a question that I'm, I'm, I've seen the SMART buses around, but how many do we have on a daily basis in the township that are operable?
You, you sometimes have, we, we have eight buses that go out every day. When we, when we took on your community, we added two buses, two, we added, I think, four buses, so we had some backup vehicles, but we added two buses daily to daily operation. So we were at six prior, we added two more to be at eight when we, when we took you on. But at any given day, you may have eight buses in your community. So it, it, it really depends on, you know, your ridership and, and the people that, that call. And so you can go anywhere from having, you know, maybe one bus here in a day, although that, in Macomb Township, that doesn't happen very often, to having all eight of the buses serving somebody in, in your community, and that's part of being, you know, a cooperative. But we just don't know day-to-day who's going to call for what, you know, for what appointments.
Of course, thank you kindly.
Treasurer Droulet?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Macomb Township residents pay about, a little over, probably about $3.5 million per year in SMART taxes that go to support the SMART system, and we're getting back about, how much, two hundred thousand?
A little over two hundred.
A little over two hundred thousand back for local distribution. It is a, it is a challenge for SMART to try to find ways to be supportive of our community, because our community is, you know, in so many ways built around the personal vehicle. Everyone, you know, subdivisions are built largely around personal vehicle. I, I would like to, you know, commend both Fred and Jeff for really taking the time to ask questions, to look for opportunities, to find a way to return as much value as possible to Macomb Township residents. I know it's a challenge to do that, but they've been very eager and interested in looking for ways to try to find a way to connect with our community and provide the best value they can back. So as, as trustee Cusmano stated, the service that's being provided essentially relieves us of the administrative costs. If we could take that $211,000 and hire people and, you know, do other, to administer this, but they're taking on that task, and they are committed to looking for ways to continue to increase what value they can to our residents, and I appreciate that, and I appreciate the time you took to work with us in, in moving forward on this. So thank you.
Thank you.
Just for clarification for anyone who might be listening, can you describe the service area that SMART covers for us?
So for my...
For Richmond Lennox covers us, yeah.
For my part of the operation, right, so, so we, we cover your township. We go out as far, as far west now as the, kind of the Troy, I call it the Troy-Bolmont corridor, if you will, onto Quinder. We go as far south as down to Sixteen Mile Road to take in the McLaren and Henry Ford systems. We go as far north up to Boardman Road. We've taken folks from Macomb Township for, for recreational-type trips up to Blake's. So we go, you know, north, north as well. And then we go east over to County Line or the, or the easternmost border of, of Macomb County. We kind of set the hospital corridor as our area, because again, a, a number of the rides that we provide, not all of them, but a number of the rides we provide on this small shuttle service are centered around medical appointments, are centered around treatment and care issues, and that's where our health systems, you know, are in fact, are in fact located. So that's kind of how we set our, our coverage area. There are communities, and, and every community can be different. There are, there are communities in Macomb County, and that's why I'm careful not to talk about SMART as a whole, I just talk about my own, that the community has decided that they'll only operate within their own community's borders. And, and that's okay, that's, that's, that's why this community partnership really allows for individual community decisions to be made. So, did that answer your question?
It does, it does, thank you. Any more discussion or questions from the board?
Supervisor, if I could just add, just in terms of, and thank you for your comments, Leonard, I really appreciate, appreciate you coming out, seeing the facility that we helped construct out there in Richmond, but you're absolutely correct with regard to administrative costs and so forth. Instead of having, you'd have to have a, you know, a scheduler, a call taker, a dispatcher, coordinate drug testing for, for the employees that are actually driving the vehicles and so forth, so all of that administrative cost, you know, is part of his program for eleven different communities. So instead of eleven communities doing all of those costs, it's, it's all consolidated there. And then additionally, with, with all of his vehicles, they're actually maintained by SMART employees down at, at our terminal in Clinton Township. So, you know, our guys are, every week he submits a report, we know what the mileage is on every one of those vehicles, and we call up and say, hey, Jeff, you need to bring in thirty-eight oh eleven, or whatever vehicle it is, it's time for an oil change. Our guys cover all of those costs as well, so that's, you know, part of, you know, trying to be cooperative and make sense. He doesn't have to hire mechanics to do that, we, we've got our folks to do that. And they specialize in things like wheelchair lift repairs, which some communities have their DPWs doing that, and in most instances, those guys are not familiar with working with wheelchair lifts, you know, so that's kind of what we specialize in. So, so we're trying to bring, you know, many different skill sets together in, in making a cooperative effort to provide the residents the best service possible.
Thank you. All right, if there's nothing else, we have, let's go back to one, we have a motion by Treasurer Droulet, supported by Clerk Posey, to authorize the supervisor to execute the SMART Municipal Credit and Community Credit Contract for fiscal year 2022. That motion passes unanimously. All right, moving on to public comment, thank you.
Thank you.
This is on non-agenda items. Please remember you have a three-minute time limit if you wish to participate. If you are watching on Zoom, please digitally raise your hand, you will be called on, and if you are present, please approach the podium. Please say your name and address as well, thank you.
Good evening Supervisor Viviano and Board of Trustees, I'm Camille Silda, president, current president of the Clinton-Macomb Library Board, located at four nine, four zero nine hundred Romeo Plank in Clinton Township. Last meeting, you decided to do the reappointment, and I apologize, but I was out of state visiting with my family for a birthday that we have not been able to accomplish in several years. So I wanted to say that I appreciate your confidence in myself and Amy Willey, and we try hard to work diligently and to represent the township and the library in the best way that we can. I also just wanted to remind you that the grand opening of the new library across the way is on September ninth... is on September 19th at 2:00 PM, and we are inviting all the board and trustees, as well as all the residents in Macomb Township to attend. That's all I had to say, just wanted to thank you and apologize for being out of town.
Thank you, Camille, I appreciate all the work that you do for us.
Okay, thanks.
Anyone else? One coming?
Hello, how are you guys today? Thank you for, for having this and for letting me speak. Really, I don't even know where to begin with this. I'm a resident, 21704 Sandra Teresa, 23 Mile in Card. The reason I wanted to come in is, it's been something that has been kind of bothering me. I have four kids, we live off of Card Road, and the lack of sidewalks on Card are really just kind of upsetting. I don't know if this is the right even venue to bring this up in, but I was just looking around and just figured, hey, start here. But as kids, I remember being able to bike up to the corner store and, and grab a pop and a candy bar and stuff like that. And there's a ton of developments now, and I know that when those developments go in, they're required to put in a sidewalk, but there's a lot of, still a lot of single-family homes on that road that just, they haven't been done yet. Not only that, the drain south of 23 Mile and Card, you can't even safely bike across that with two lanes of traffic. It's, I think it's maybe three feet shoulder on both sides, and then the lanes are right there. So it's just something, I, I don't know if there's, where to bring this up, or where, who, who the best person is to talk to about this. But as a resident, I figured attending this meeting and, and bringing up my concern might, might help with something. So that's all, I just wanted to, and it's not just our street, it's, it's other, others as well, but that's, obviously Card is the one I live off of, so that's the one I wanted to talk about, so, thank you guys.
Thank you, appreciate your comments. I, I will respond to you a little bit. We do have a program, and if you hang out till after the meeting, I think we could give you some more information.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask you to state your name for the record?
Oh yeah, I'm so sorry.
That's okay.
It's Ryan Bellicki.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Ivanowski, is there anyone wishing to participate?
No, sir, not at this time.
No, okay. Seeing that there's no one else, at this time we'll close public comment, and we will move on to trustee comments. Mr. Oliver?
Just want to thank the employee in the assessing department for stepping up and going through all the classes. To go to them levels, it's not, it's a lot of work. And it's, it's not a, a 10-minute class and talk to your friends after, it's a lot of effort. And so I just want to thank them, and that's it. Glad to see SMART was here, and thanks for bringing them. That's it.
Thank you, trustee Oliver. Trustee Cusmano?
Mr. Chairman, I have no comments tonight, thank you.
Thank you, trustee Cusmano. Trustee Lucido?
Nothing for me tonight.
Thank you. Trustee Nevers?
I would just like to express my feelings about the SMART services. I think there's a lot of people that probably didn't know all of that. I might have been one of them, and so I appreciate that they were able to give us a nice presentation and tell us of all of the opportunities they have, so thank you.
Thank you, trustee Nevers. Treasurer Gillette?
I have nothing, sir.
Shocking. Clerk Posey?
I just wanted to congratulate Camille, because I didn't get the opportunity to do that at the last meeting, and that's all I have for this evening.
Thank you, Clerk Posey. And I have nothing tonight. So with that being said, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Support.
A discussion on the motion. Okay, we have a motion by Clerk, or Treasurer Gillette, supported by Clerk Posey, to adjourn the meeting. Members, please vote. I'd like to all in favor, it's more fun. That motion passes 7-0, this meeting is adjourned.
At 7:24.